Well, any developer or investor who buys one or more houses in the neighborhood and announces he or she wants to flatten the properties and build something else, the developer could then point to these two demolitions and, again, in my opinion, use them to justify circumvention of city heritage regulations. And, believe me, investors and speculators are already buying houses in the Victoria Park neighborhood. If we approve these demolitions, I am told by heritage officials that no amount of fancy footwork wording contained in that approval will prevent such a precedent in Victoria Park and other heritage areas. I attended a recent public information meeting at Schneider House dealing with these demolitions. And at a time when the region has at least 10,000 seniors, adults, children on a waitlist for affordable housing, the REIN, our emergency housing provider, argues that these houses were unsuitable for low-cost shelter. They claim the cost too much to maintain. I argue they should sell the properties for about, probably about 800,000, and use that cash, among other things, to, pardon me, upgrade Schneider House. And I'm also sure that the working center or a house of friendship could put those properties to excellent use. With those two houses in mind, I also attended the annual general meeting of Reception House, the nearby refugee welcoming center located in Victoria Park, about a block away from these proposed demolitions. I learned at that meeting that Reception House last year helped about 1,500, that's 1,500 adults and children. And their biggest issue always involves locating housing for those individuals and families. Regional Chair Ken Seeling, by the way, was also at that meeting and heard those stats. So all that need continues to grow. We're proposing to tear down decent housing. And I reobject to that. I'll vote against the demolitions, and I urge other councillors to do the same. Thanks.
Councillor Schneider.
Mr. Vannevik. I want to thank all the delegations who came in to speak tonight and all the correspondence that we've received on this. There's a lot of passion on this. From being on advisory committees, I can really appreciate the hard work and the discussions and opinions and recommendations that they bring forth. And I know this is one of those delicate situations. I would not want to see homes approved demolished under any other reason than what we're talking about tonight. This is a link to an historic site. And as councillor Galloway-Seelock asked, you know, what history do we preserve? As councillor Singh brought up, this is not just a district issue. This is something that's for the whole city, the province, the country. It's an easy decision, but I do believe we are returning Joseph Schneider House to more of its original state, not the complete original state. I would not be approving this if we were to build up buildings. I'm looking at a garden, and the thing that I'm looking at looks like it would fit in really nice with the district and with the historic site. Thank you.
Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, I want to start out by saying, unfortunately, I was on the Heritage Committee, and I was out of the country at the time when this came to the committee, looking at other heritage sites. I do want to commend both our staff and staff from the region. I think they've done an excellent job. I think they've laid everything out in front of us. I think they've both tried to answer the situation. I cannot support where we're going, and it's not a matter of, an issue to me of housing stock, but it is a matter of precedent setting, and I believe we really are precedent-setting. Mr. Mayor, you sort of alluded to the fact, well, if it has anything to do with a national historic site, it's okay, and that's why it's okay in this case, which means that in a couple of years, the region could come in for another couple of houses, and we'd work away at it and work away while we finally get to that 400-acre site. To me, the whole reason that the council of the day set up that historic district was to maintain the way that things were at that time in 1996. The region really failed, having been at the house in '75 and purchased the other properties in '89, not to come forward at that time with the arguments as to where they were going down the road. The other big problem with this whole issue is that we are the region. We, the local government, it's like having rules, and we really watch this and everything that we do, having rules that we can break for ourselves but require everyone else to live by the rules. We have the rules in place, and just because it's the region, there's no reason we should be contemplating breaking the rules and a precedent setting. In the future, people are going to say, well, you did it for yourselves, you and the region. We're in bed together. You did it for yourselves. Now you have to do it for me also. So I just, and I also want to, if I can talk, we're in a time of intensification, not in a time of going out and coming up with, we're trying to do more and more intensification, and we have an intensification situation there, and it has worked well. I saw in Europe so many places that were crowded in amongst other buildings, and they dealt with many, many, many tourists. Yes, if there's a will, there's all kinds of programming that can be done, but you can't start tearing down, I really believe you can't tear down, and it's a principle, I think, that is in place in this province, in this country. You can't tear down one period, improve one period at the expense of another period. And our period that we're dealing with here was 1996 Kitchener and our district as it stood at that time. We can never go back to what the Schneider House was in its day, in its original day. But yet, I think a lot of that is captured there for people to see, but that's as far back as we can go. I think if we do this, it's only a matter of time before the next one will creep into the door and somehow tie it in, and tie it into an historic site and rationalize it. I would urge council that we have rules. Our staff has clearly told us of what our rules are. We seem to listen to staff and everything else. I urge you to listen to staff on this one.
Councillor Fernandez.
Thank you. So the region has always been a very strong supporter of heritage and preservation. And, you know, I mean, I remember Ms. Hagerman standing in front of Heritage Kitchener, talking about bridges and the cultural heritage landscapes. So I hope that we've worked very well together in the past. So it is a little bit sad to see this coming to us as a council in a way that we're kind of fighting against each other. We want to preserve our national historic site. We want to make it better and improve it for residents, but at the cost of one resource being elevated or compared to another, I don't think that that is the intention of the district heritage plan. And we've heard that from Ms. Drake a number of times tonight. There are three other houses backing onto this site that are really behind the houses, I'm not including the houses that are in the open space, that, you know, in the future could be open for purchasing by the region and expanding the site even more. What we're doing is we're removing, and I always understood when demolition applications used to come to us, and I would often ask questions about that, does it remove housing stock that's important to our citizens, not just because it's historic, but also because it's important for us to have that housing stock? These houses have heritage value, and they also offer opportunities, and unique opportunities, for residents in our city to have housing. I think that we need to take that as part of this decision that we're making, and I think we really do need to listen to what our staff is saying this time. It is housing stock that's important. It is heritage, and it very likely could open the door or be a slippery slope once we start here.
Councillor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad you made the comments that you did. And you're right in saying that in both sides of this, there is no wrong side. I think we have contradictory views and parties that are very passionate about this. And sometimes, when you are so passionate, you know, you gravitate to aspects of fear that may not be founded. Some of those are, and re-mentioning of precedent setting, that, you know, developers will creep into the Victoria Park neighborhood and start destructing high-rises or new development. This is not the case. Let's be fair, take a moment and reflect on that, what we have before us as an applicant who is, which is a regional Waterloo, a partner, community partner, who has a strong history of defending the very principles that we do when it comes to heritage preservation. They're not probably taking this decision very lightly of wanting to demolish these two homes. As a government body, whenever we can have access to new monies, we love to take that opportunity. The region could have very well sold these two homes and brought some extra money to its coffers. They're doing so because they are conscientious of the historical significance of the Schneider House, a national historic site that needs to be celebrated, that needs to be cherished, and that needs to have more folk off of Queen Street. That is their endeavor, and that is the benefit that will be brought from this. And there are no issues of precedent setting, I think, on this. I think we will continue on being respectful to our heritage and any other applications that come before it, and approach a more common sense aspect, as we're trying to do in this one. And because of that, I am supportive, supportive. I shudder to think, you know, I've had opportunities to travel in Europe and Asia and visit historical sites. What if they had stopped people from coming because, you know, the fear was, you know, you're going to degrade that site? You know, we can't approach all things aspect of fear. We have to grow our community. We have to, you know, we have to celebrate the things that we have and appreciate and honor them as well. And I think that is what we're doing by approving the recommendation from the Heritage Committee.
Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yes, I don't mean to complicate things, but in light of what I've been hearing around the table, I did some wording to add to the recommendation, and I think, if the clerk can put it. I understand from legal that you said we didn't need it to strengthen it, but I think that it's important to send the message that we're hearing around the table with regards to this. So the motion is, the rationale for the approval is based solely on its proximity and its use for the national historic site and should not be considered as a precedent for demolition of other homes in heritage districts. And that was the fear that a lot of people brought forward today. I think it's important to try and reassure and give that messaging as much as we can and that strength behind that we are doing this because of, it's taking one history or heritage and giving it to a different place. We're not, at the end of the day, we are preserving and conserving heritage, period. And so I think it's really important to have that message out, and by adding this to the recommendation as an additional clause, I think just further communicates to the community that anywhere in a district, you're not going to get a demolition permit just because we did this one. And I understand the arguments other people have made, that there are other homes along the edge of that site. I appreciate that, but I also believe in the word of the region that they have no further intent to expand the site any further. And so I have to believe that to be true right now, and so I'm going to support it, and I would hope that we can support the additional wording, just to give back to the community some reassurance and some communication that it's done so with reluctance, but for the national historic site.
So councillor Galloway-Seelock, are you suggesting that that would be added as sort of a furthermore at the end of the current motion? Okay. Okay, is there a second for that? Councillor Singh. Okay, we'll continue on comments. Councillor Davie.
Thank you. I'll begin by saying that I'll be supporting the additional wording. I think it's implied, but I think it's better than explicit. I do find this planning's imprecise, and the character is even more imprecise when it comes to trying to make these sorts of decisions. And I think we heard from our staff, even our own staff are divided on this issue somewhat. I don't see it at all as a wedge issue. I would, I think I would practically dare a developer to use this example to do something like building an apartment complex or townhomes or something like that. What's going to happen here is we're essentially breaking to, I guess you could say, smaller-scale heritage eggs to build what the region wants to have a much larger heritage omelet here. So if a developer wants to point to this area and say, look what they did, they tore down these two homes, and then any precedent within there, they're going to say, well, what did they do there? What did they build? Well, there's an open space and some gardens, and it does not detract at all from the cultural heritage landscape or district. So how can that possibly be used as a precedent? It doesn't really make any practical sense. So I think we need to use some, we need to use the intention here of the rule, and I think that the additional wording will help in that, and I will be supporting the recommendation, the motion and the additional wording.
Councillor Janeski.
Having read the staff report, the HIA report as well, I looked at it from a perspective of a professional planner, in my times at that time, but I also looked at it from the professional opinions that were presented by the city staff as well as the heritage staff, from the HIA proponents. This really comes down to a decision that we have to make from two professional groups, and it's really akin to being the same thing as being at the Ontario Municipal Board hearing. We've got two sides of professional groups arguing about an official amendment or zone change, and both are professionals, both have arguments, yet they've got two different opinions as to approach, decision, policy interpretation, et cetera. And this is what we have here today in terms of a heritage application. The only thing is, is that we make the final decision. When I read the staff report and saw the regional report, I thought, well, we've got a conflict of opinions here, but well-presented. Yet, when I saw the decision, when I read in the paper and then saw the minutes of the Heritage Committee, I was shocked to hear the recommendation. It just blew me away. The drawing that we have here presented by the region is certainly nice and flowery and lots of trees and green grass and gardens, et cetera. It makes it look appealing. However, you've still got to keep in context what the houses are there for in the first place. It's part of the heritage district. That was adopted back in 1996. Although the houses were purchased by the region in '89, '91, they went purchased for heritage purposes only. If you may recall, at the time, and having my experience, been working back to the city at the time, there was a whole issue of the Bent Street-Queen corridor realignment of those two particular streets. And the intent of the city at the time was buying some of those houses, and then followed up by the region to buy a whole section from the Mill-Queen area all the way out to the Cortland-Benton area to provide a new realignment of the Benton-Queen corridor. And those houses were bought for those purposes, and these two as well. That was the purpose. That was back in the 80s. And I was involved with some of this stuff, not directly in terms of purchasing, but from the planning perspective, in terms of looking at what land uses would be and how they'd all come about. Heritage wasn't considered, not even on the table. And so when the region bought those properties, as well as all the other properties, it was worth a Queen-Benton alignment. And eventually, through planning and with the regional decisions, the corridor was eventually abandoned, and that corridor was removed from the official plan as well. But the houses got remained here. When you look at the parking lot, there, whether it is for the Schneider House, that's where some of the houses were. They got demolished because they were owned by the region, yet worked perfectly to provide some parking for the Schneider House. The need for the district was to preserve the homes in the area, and that was the purpose of what was built. We talked about precedent setting. Interesting to note that when this was considered by Heritage Committee a couple of weeks ago, in the last week or so during Oktoberfest, and talking with a developer, you saw the recommendation from the Heritage Committee, says, well, I guess that's going to open the door for demolition, because once this goes through, I think the door is open. This is from a developer. He saw it clearly, and I saw what he was coming from. Conservation is good, is very, very good. The regional proposal to make this into an open space area for gardening purposes has its merit, but it will not improve the area. I'm not convinced that the regional proposal is the right way to go, not at all. The purpose of a heritage district is not, is to preserve the housing, not demolish it. I'm not supporting the recommendation of the committee.
Councillor Atherton, you've already spoken.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak. I just wanted to ask for a recorded vote.
Okay, I'll come to you for that after I make my own comments.
Also, the word precedent is spelled wrong.
That, that's... Okay, so with that, I want to begin by thanking everyone who came and, either through this process or the public meetings that the region had, or Heritage Kitchener meeting, thank them for, each of you, for your participation in this process. And I think in many ways, it speaks to the passion that exists within our community for our community's heritage. And regardless of whichever side of the issue you happen to be on, that really is a win for our community and something that I certainly appreciate and value. As I've been listening to the various arguments being made on this issue, it concerns me that there seems to be this perception out there by some that this is some sort of nefarious plot by the region. And I want to remind everyone that we happen to have two tiers of local government here, but we have a long history of, while we have our differences from time to time, we have a long history of collaboration and working together in terms of those two tiers, much more so than in many other jurisdictions elsewhere. And I think it's important to remember here that while there may be differences of opinion, the other order of government isn't the enemy here. And taking a decision on this issue that might see these two buildings go down is not going to put open-for-demolition signs throughout our heritage districts in the city of Kitchener. I truly do appreciate and value that our staff have given this their best professional opinion and gave us their best recommendation. And I believe regional staff, which have, are the custodians of the national historic site, and their consultants have the exact same thing in terms of that particular site. You know, we're fortunate in this community that we have three national historic sites. Any communities would love to even have one. And, you know, the fact that we're dealing with this and trying to make sure that those sites continue to thrive and be successful is important. And we know that access to our other two national historic sites, because federal budgets and so on, has been cut back during the period of previous government, and that hasn't changed with this current government. And the fact that the region is trying to make sure that this continues to be an active site for our citizens for decades into the future is, to me, very compelling. I believe that the issue of precedent setting is ultimately one whose argument I can stand behind. While I understand it, while I respect the professional opinion, I think through the comments made around this horseshoe night, through the additional wording, which I'm happy to support, that's being proposed by councillor Galloway-Seelock, I think we can deal with anybody else who will come forward and propose a demolition that isn't connected with the national historic site. And as such, I will be supporting the recommendation coming out of our Heritage Committee and the additional wording that's been proposed this evening. So with that, a recorded vote has been called. I'll deal with the amendment first. Are you waiting for someone to vote? Somebody hasn't voted yet. Those in favor? Those opposed? And the motion carries? And then I will deal with the motion as amended. Councillor Marsh clicked him. Oh, okay. Your voting. Those in favor? Those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, this evening and being part of this discussion. We'll now move on to clause number two on the Heritage Kitchener report. And Ms. Hicks, you're back up.
My name is Vanessa Hicks, and I'm a heritage planner. And again, I'm here before you just to, in support of the recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee as it relates to the heritage permit application for the proposed development at 64 Margaret Avenue. at sixty-four Margaret Avenue, and just to encourage you to endorse the recommendations of the Heritage Advisory Committee. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Counsel Marsh has some questions?
Yeah, I, I think it's just unfortunate that because of the nature of our legislated requirements for the committee of adjustment timing of notifications, the residents neighboring this property that's being proposed is, have only recently been, become aware of the details. And so what I'm, what I'd like to find out from, from you is whether or not there would be a possibility to defer this decision to enable the residents to meet with up yourself or the proponents themselves to learn, to be able to voice their concerns and perhaps see if there's a possibility for those concerns to be addressed.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I understand, and I understand that there are concerns from the residents. And from what I understand, those concerns are not necessarily by heritage matter, but are related to the matters that are related to a separate process that are going forward to the Heritage, excuse me, the Committee of Adjustment at tomorrow's meeting. And does that answer your question?
Yeah. You, I understand that, that's your perspective. So the way I understand it, there might have been a resident coming in, but clearly they're, they're not here. Perhaps they were watching this long topic that we just finished and decided to come. But they had, the resident that I'm speaking of, I just want a minute, they read in minutes of Heritage-Kitchener meeting from several years ago about a neighboring property down the street on Margaret Avenue, that Heritage-Kitchener was very concerned about the neighboring properties and how height would negatively impact the residents on Ellen Street backing onto that property. However, there's no mention in Heritage-Kitchener minutes of a similar concern for, for the neighbors right next door on Ellen Street who are now backing onto this proposed property. And so they're, they're really just concerned that if council would approve the Heritage-Kitchener recommendations tonight, that it would give additional support at the Committee of Adjustment meeting. And so that's why they were hoping that this decision could be deferred until after the Committee of Adjustment decision. So...
Question? Sorry.
I guess that wasn't a question, was it? I'm just trying to explain why I'm, why I'm bringing this forward. So maybe it's a quest of, Mayor Verbanovic?
Okay. Did you want to?
May I? I don't know if there's others in the queue.
Oh, there's nobody else in the queue?
All right. Okay, question of staff. Michelle's familiar with this topic. And so, Ms. Drake, I'm wondering if you can shed light on whether or not a decision tonight that to approve the recommendation would influence at all the decision at the Committee of Adjustment?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can't speak for members of the Committee of Adjustment, but I suspect that the applicant would likely advise that committee that they had come to council this evening and share the outcome of whatever decision council chooses to make.
Sure, yeah. Okay. So, and if we were to defer decision tonight, can you please help us to understand what would happen if we defer the decision to a later date, and what date would we need to defer that decision?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, similar to the previous item you're dealing with, as a heritage permit, we have to process it with ninety days. So we could defer council's consideration on them until, I believe, the November sixth council meeting. But I think your next meeting after that is after the ninety days. We could defer it until that point in time. There is a conversation with the file planner responsible for the Committee of Adjustment file to likely arrange a meeting, as mentioned, with the applicant and residents and staff. So ideally, we would try to have that meeting before this would come back to council.
Okay. So at the appropriate time, I just want to move that we defer the decision until the next council meeting on November sixth.
Okay, when, I'll take counsel, I'll have Counsel Gazola bring the motion forward first, and then I'll come back to you for the deferral. Counsel Gazola? Thank you.
Yes, it has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh that pursuant to Section forty-two of the Interior Heritage Act, Heritage Permit Application twenty-seventeen V dash zero-three-one prove, permit the construction of two multi-residential buildings located on the property municipally addressed at sixty-four Margaret Avenue in accordance with the plans and supplementary information submitted with the application and described in the community's report, CSD seventeen dash zero-six, subject to the following conditions. Condition number one, samples of the building materials and colors be submitted for review and approval by planning, heritage planning staff. And secondly, that the final build permit drawing be reviewed and heritage clearance provided heritage planning staff prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Counselor Marsh, should we go ahead? Thank you.
I move to defer the decision of that, just that item, to the November sixth council meeting.
So for the purpose of the...
For the purpose of additional conversation between the proponent and the neighboring residents due to the fact that they have not had a chance to have any back and forth with the developer as yet.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second for that? Second, Counsel Fernandez. Okay. Any discussion as to timing? Counsel Anetis?
I'm just more of a comment.
Okay. We're just on the deferral? Okay, I'll let you, I'll let you make your, before I deal with the deferral.
Okay. I can understand Counsel Marsh's approach with this, but I think it's the wrong avenue to use, heritage issue that's being recommended here because of neighbors' concerns when it's not, it's not a heritage thing that they're actually complaining about, the residents. They're talking more of a site plan that they have concerns about. So to me, I'm not sure why we need to delay the heritage approval of this when it's not, that's not what's being brought up by the residents. So that's why I can't support that.
Okay, thank you. So I'll deal with the deferral. All those in favor? And the chair's in favor, so the deferral carries. We'll be dealing with this on the sixth. We will now move to the tenders, please. Yes, there's no other delegations left. Done all the tenders, too? We are done all the tenders. Wow, that doesn't happen too often. So let's move into committee reports then. And, sorry, Counsel Fernandez, you're...
Just a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
The August Fairings Report, would I have a question about that once we get to Committee of Charge?
Yes, we'll come back to that. Okay, so Counselor Davey, Finance, please.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider. The six items on Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay. And Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I wanted to deal with items three, four, and six separately, if I could, if we could.
Okay. Go ahead.
Where do you want to start?
Why don't you start with number three?
Yeah, I, I've been reviewing where, I wasn't here again last week, or two weeks ago when this was approved. I know where, I know where staff is coming from. I'm putting forward an amendment, a minor amendment, to what staff has recommended. I can do that now? Can I do that, or?
Yeah, you want to move your amendment? Okay, and the amendment is in, in the bold print?
Yeah, the reason I'm putting this forward, I feel that...
Sorry, before, before you go into the rationale, is there a second? Counsel Anetiskey? Okay, go ahead. Counsel Gazola?
The reason I'm putting is that I, I know that the, the rates put forward by staff dues sort of leave the, sort of in a break-even position with a slight possible decrease in the rates. I believe that, that it's possible to go a little bit further, and I would like to do that for our customers. The supply portion of, of the rates can only be used for supply. We really have, we set aside, we had close to nine million dollars in that reserve. Two years ago, there was no action whatsoever, anything coming out of it. Last year again, in twenty sixteen, there was, I think, some three hundred thousand dollars came out of it. And this year, we had planned, we had planned up to the end of August to take out about six million dollars, and two million have come out of it. The reserve is larger than I believe it needs to be, and rather than, that money can only be used for supply. And rather than, than leave it sitting in our bank, I'd like to just give a little break to our, to our customers. It's not, it's not, it has very little impact. It does, it does help our customers a little bit. They are facing an eight cent increase in the carbon portion, the carbon tax portion of the rate, so it's just something to soften that blow somewhat. On the basis of, I think our annual consumption is in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-fifty million cubic meters, a half a cent reduction is really minimal, and it's, it's not a big thing on our part, and yet it does show our customers that we are concerned with, with the plight of rising utility costs.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Davey on this? Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. First question, a question of staff on this. Do we know what the impact might be if it were reduced by an additional half to the two-point-five million balance? And same question on that balance, what is target for this reserve?
Ms. Latcher?
Through the chair. First of all, I wasn't aware that the amendment was coming forward, so I'm going to do my best to answer questions of council. And maybe a starting point is to explain why the reserve is in a more favorable position. It's mainly due to weather and the fact that we had a lower commodity price this year. If either one of those things had changed, we wouldn't be in as favorable a position. In answer to Counsel Davey's question, this reserve is sitting at the minimum level, and I believe it's, I wouldn't want to speculate on where it's sitting right now, but I have confirmed with staff prior to this meeting that it's sitting at its minimum level.
Okay. And the next question, supposing that things go well again, and we actually end up collecting more money than we anticipated, how does that work out in forward rates?
Through the chair. When staff does their comprehensive review and puts together the rate proposal, they do consider where the stabilization rate sits at that point and the projected year-end rate. So that is factored into the two thousand and eighteen rates. Should we reduce the supply stabilization any further, the risk is that we will have to raise rates next year.
Okay, so just to understand correctly then, so supposing that we do collect more money than we anticipate, it would ultimately be returned to our customers in subsequent rate-setting sessions?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Could I respond to that also?
Okay, Counsel Gazola, you've already spoken. Let you make a short comment.
Well, you ask staff for responses. This is a, this should be a debate of council, not a debate of staff.
Counsel Gazola?
Okay.
You have motion. Counselor Davey has the right to questions so that we can decide whether or not he's going to court it or not.
Yeah. And I just want to give him some answers to questions, too.
Well, the questions are of staff, not of council.
Pardon?
The answers are, the answers are provided by staff to council's questions, not by other members of council unless the question was asked of you.
Oh, I see.
I think you've been around...
So staff have all the answers, council don't know what the hell they're talking about.
Hey, Counsel Gazola, if you have a comment to make, please make it.
No, I...
Counsel Davey, point of order?
Thank you. It is the most basic right of a member of council to ask her professional staff for advice when it comes to very important situations like this. The fact that someone's suggesting I shouldn't be able to ask the professionals, quite frankly, concerns me greatly.
Counsel Gazola, do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, I have a comment to make. One of the main reasons that there's more money in that reserve, and I've been following this, I have, and staff have provided me with them, I have the prices, market value, what spot market prices and what we charge going back to the year two thousand, nineteen-ninety-eight. And we have, in the last few years, our supply rate we're charging is higher than what the spot market rate is. And because of that, we haven't had to draw down on that supply. I'm looking, and I'm looking now at September, at our September figure, again, our, our, our rate is higher than what the spot market rate is. So again, we're not going to be drawing down that, that reserve. So it's, it's a question of leaving the money in our bank account, earning a few dribbles of interest, or giving our customers a little bit of a break. And I'm moving that give our customers a little bit of a break. End of story. Thank you. And I'll ask for a recorded vote on my amendment.
That's fine. I will deal with the recorded vote. So we will deal with the amendment now. This is item number three, the amendment that's on the screen. You feel you need, absolutely. Go ahead. No? Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to make a quick comment that a lot of these questions were asked during the committee meeting, and we were given the answers by staff. I know that I asked if we could go a little bit further than what staff were suggesting, and it was highly advised not to do that because our customers like reliability, and they also, they don't, and this is very volatile. So I think that that's the answers that I remember getting because I, I asked the exact same thing. Can we push these numbers a little lower to... Can we push these numbers a little lower to conserve for the customer? And the answer was, we could pull a lot of things in jeopardy if we do that. So with that advice from our professional staff, I'm not going to be able to support the amendment to go further, but I know that a lot of us came from that perspective when we dealt with this at committee.
Okay, so we will now deal with the amendment before us, and a recorded vote. Those in favor, those opposed. And the motion does not carry, so we'll deal with the original motion. Those in favor, those opposed, and that's carried. Okay, Counselor Marsh, I, number five, back to you. Okay, I'll deal with Number Four next. Counselor Gazola, you had an amendment you wanted to bring forward on that one? Number Four is the purchasing bylaw. Can you click in, please?
May I ask a question before, before I do that?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I talked to Ms. Palmer today, and I'm really trying to understand where we're going with this, and trying to, the first question I asked is, how many tender jobs are there that we deal with every year? How many tender approvals?
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We issue approximately 200 bid solicitations in a year, of which approximately 100 come to council for approval under the current bylaw.
So do we have any breakdown, did you provide counsel with any breakdown of those, is it 100 or 2, is it 200 that we're dealing with? I thought today you told me 100, but it's 200 that we're dealing with? Do we have a, to make this decision, should we not have seen some sort of a breakdown of what we're dealing with now?
Ms. Palmer? I know this was talked about at committee, but go ahead.
That's okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I may have been unclear, I spoke too quickly in my response. So in our current practice, in an average year, 100 bid solicitations come to council for approval.
Okay, one final question, and then, and if you answered this at committee, you don't have to answer it now, okay? That's my problem for not being at committee. I asked, what, as a result of these changes, what are the improvements that we will be seeing? And, and/or, secondly, as a result of these changes, what are some of the problems that we will no longer incur? Have you covered all of that at the committee? You don't have to answer.
Ms. Palmer?
Mayor, I believe I covered it at committee, but I'm happy to restate it.
Go ahead.
This revised policy really provides us adapt to explore innovative approaches to public procurement. It's not about solving potential problems that we've had, it's about continuous improvement of our current practice.
Okay, I have a comment, and then you can-
Okay, so are you, are you moving this? Are you moving this amendment?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Am I, am I able first to move, to make this motion? Asking for a different amount than what's in this report.
Okay, is there a secondary? Counselor Fernandez, or Counselor Gazola, make your comments, please.
Yeah, no, I, I'm really confused here, and I spoke today with Ms. Palmer, I, you know, life changes every day. There's changes, and it's a thing we have to live with, and a thing we need to embrace, but when we tend to make changes, when I look at a change, I like to see improvements that come from making the change, or if there are a reason for making the changes, that we've had serious problems, and then I can understand for the purpose of a change. And in this case, I don't see either one of those, I don't, and I'm really, you know, we talk about transparency all the time, and now we're going from, from things coming to council that normally were over 100,000, now they have to be over, if my, if my recommendation goes through, now they have to be over 550,000 before they come to council. Staff's, staff's recommendation is 750,000. That's, that's quite a, quite a change of where we've been and to where we're going. And to me, that's less information, that's less transparent. I know that, and I spoke to staff today, they said that we deal with the things somewhat wrong at council here, and yes, perhaps we do, but I've always found it an opportunity to find out, it's our opportunity to get a last, your last question as to things that are happening, what, just what is happening, and where our large amounts of our expenditures are going. And it's, it's an opportunity, counsel, to, to get somewhat, some training as what's, what's happening, where our dollars are going, and to ask questions. And I think they're, they're well worthwhile, they, they do give us some idea of where we're going, and by, by going in this direction, I believe that a good deal of that will be, will be cut out. I want to see the numbers of tenders that have, we've had in the past to get some idea, are we now going to have 50% of what's come to council before, are we going, are we going to have 10%? You know, what would it be? But that, that was not forthcoming, so. I know transparency is something everybody talks about, and coming 2018 election year, there'll be, you'll hear that word more and more often, so. I just, here's an opportunity to, to be a little more transparent by approving a rate in excess of 550,000 as compared to 750.
Any other comments on this one? Sorry, okay, Counselor Fernandez, a comment?
Yes, last week, a question was asked of Ms. Palmer about how many more tenders that she would be seeing, and I think actually the question should have been in reverse with the change in, that I had recommended at the time was five, was the original motion that's here on the, that I had printed out, of 100,000 to 500,000. I think the question should have been posed, what is, what would the difference be between what we, the 700,000, 750,000 threshold that they had, that staff had proposed, and the 500,000 that I had proposed? So wouldn't, I believe the way the question was asked and answered, it led counsel to believe that would be, and I could be wrong, but I think it was 36 more tenders that we'd see overall of the ones that we're having now. So I think what we should have understood, and I apologize if I had the number wrong, but it led counsel to believe, I think, that, that having the $500,000 threshold, that we would actually have more work than we do now, and under the existing conditions.
No, I don't believe that was the case. I think the response, if I recall what happened at committee, was that if we go from 750 to the reduced number, that would result in additional reports and additional work to cover off that, that number, whatever, whether it's 36 or whatever that number was, I don't recall a specific number.
But I think that that's incorrect way of looking at it, because already we're, if we had stayed at the $750,000 threshold, there would have been reduced number of tenders that would have had to come to council. So what we should have understood was what was the difference between the $500,000 threshold and the $750,000 threshold as compared to the number of tenders that come to council now? So let's just say, for example, 100 tenders come to council now, at the $750,000 level, how many tenders would have come to council? And at the $500,000 level, how many tenders would have come to council? Because I think there would have been a different, a significant difference. I know it's a moot point we've got, but I just wanted to make, because I'm mulling that over since, since last week, and I probably should have sent that email to you, but I did not. I was, I forgot.
Ms. Palmer, do you have any further insight you want to provide?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to follow up and provide some data afterwards to counsel, Fernandez, or the rest of council is interested in, based on the previous three years of what that would look like.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Counselor Marsh, on this issue?
Just want to ask for clarification. For, for the purposes of open and transparent government, do we not have available on our website the results of tenders available for the public to see at any point?
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. So the unofficial results, which is all the open tenders, are posted to the website immediately on, are posted within approximately 20 minutes, under our current process, with electronic bidding will be posted immediately. And then once the decision is finalized and awarded, that is flagged on the website as well, so anytime anyone can go and see any of the tender awards.
Right, and so regardless of whether we discuss it here in the council chambers and prolong the length of our discussions each time on given talks around tenders, we still will have an open and transparent government where our members of our public can see the results at any time.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, correct. I mean, that is the whole basis of the frame for the purchasing policy, is that we have an open, fair, and transparent process, and the proposed policy provides that.
Thank you.
You know, we don't go back, but Counselor Gazola, since you made the amendment, I'll let you speak briefly to it.
No, I just want to ask, I just want to ask another question.
Okay, go ahead.
That relates to that. And on the, on the website, on our website, will it also show what was budgeted for a certain project and all of the other information that we now receive? And in many cases, there's a lot of good detailed explanation of each tender. Will that, is that available on the website? Will that be available on the website? I'm hearing-
Ms. Palmer?
I'm hearing silence.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So our current budget is posted on the website currently, and as well, the award information would be posted on the website. I'm unclear on the project management side, if all the project details are posted on the website in a certain area. Currently, we would, our plans with the electronic bidding and with our current system is we post the tender name, the awarded amount, and who the contractor has awarded the contract. If we wanted to provide additional project details, I believe they can see a short summary of the project, but perhaps not the history, they would have to refer to other documents for that.
Okay, from what I think I understood, you said that, yes, somewhere, all that information's available, but an interested party would have to dig it out.
Ms. Palmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry if I was unclear. No, that's not what I was trying to say. When we post bid results, we post the awarded amount, the contractor that was awarded, the name of the contract, and a brief statement of scope of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just briefly speak to it. I'm fine in supporting the motion as it is in Finance and Corporate Services Committee meeting. I think we had some discussion on this, and we have set a threshold that is actually lower than most in the area of consultant fees, because that has been an area of concern by council. I think the threshold that's been set here is one that is average of many other municipalities across the province. And I think one of the points that was made at committee last week is the purpose of tenders being on the council agenda are for council to review them from the, from a point of view of process in regards to tenders. It's, unfortunately, I think at times, we have developed a pivot trend where we use that as an opportunity to ask a lot of questions around the project, and the tender part of the council agenda is not the appropriate place for that to be taking place. So I won't be supporting the amendment. So the amendment has been moved and seconded. Did you ask for a recorded vote? Okay, recorded vote has been asked for. And it's not successful, and now we'll deal with the motion as was originally printed, Those in favor, those opposed, that's carried. Number Six, Counselor Gazola? No, I'll go to that, I'm trying to deal with the three that Counselor Gazola requested.
Yeah, no, on Number Six, I don't have any, I would just, I would like if staff, I've had a number of questions asked, I wonder if staff could just give a brief example of what's happening here. People are saying, well, our, I heard someone say the mayor's getting a huge raise, and did he pay that much taxes before? If someone could just do a brief, I'm looking to our finance people, a brief explanation for the viewing public to understand what's happening.
Mr. Chapman, can you assist us with that?
Through the Mayor, I'll do my best. In the most recent federal budget, the federal government indicated that non-taxable expense allowances paid to elected members of council and provincial and federal parliament would become taxable. And so if no action is taken, the current compensation would become fully taxable, and council members effectively would take a reduction in their net take-home pay. It's not our understanding that that's the intent, and certainly that will remind the previous decisions of citizen review committees that set the, essentially the take-home pay of councilors. So in this report, a number of options were outlined. Effectively, the question that council needs to decide is what is the effective rate at which you gross up pay to ensure that you're made no worse off? And the position that staff has taken is that because council roles are considered part-time, you should take into consideration the average M within our community, council pay on top of that, and gross up at that, at that rate. Incidentally, that rate is slightly lower, but similar to the rate that the region used when they grossed up their pay back in 2003, I believe, I believe.
Let's just throw in an example, just throw in an example of accounts, of what the exemptions and what, what's happening as a result, just so people can understand that. Just a round figure sort of thing.
So the total annual remuneration for a counselor in 2017 is $40,000. $27,000 is taxable, $13,000 is non-taxable, and so based on the marginal tax rate that I've indicated, that would be grossed up to $50,912, all taxable.
Which is the equivalent of the tax they will now have to pay on the-
What was previously non-taxable, yes.
Yeah, that's right. So that's what it is, so. So what it does, it leaves the- So, so what it does, it leaves the members of council in the same position as they were before, but it does cost the municipality something.
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and just, if, in this case, collectively, with counting everybody, it does cost our municipality about $130,000 more this year than last year. And, and which really is, is a downloading from the senior government, right?
Starting in 2019.
Yeah, no, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
So the impact is in 2019, and effectively, yes, it's simply a redistribution of local tax dollars to the federal level.
Okay, that's, it's not, it's not a free lunch for anybody, it's, that's what it is.
It's basically putting more money into federal coffers.
That's right, at, at the expense of our local property. I just wanted to explain that for the people.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel, Counsel Marsh?
Just regarding number five.
Number five.
I want to not let it slide that we received an email from our manager of long-term planning to look at deferring the fourth paragraph of number five, deferring that to our December 4th standing committee meeting. Whereas here, it's written that we would defer it to the today's meeting. And, yeah. So there it is, in the, in this written portion, the bottom of the screen, that the recommendations outlined in the parts of the town plan related to the implementation of the roadway connection and parkland identified on the properties municipally addressed as 101 and 105 Glasgow Street, and is referred to in clause five of this report, be deferred until December 4th standing committee of council.
So Counsel Davey, when you made that motion, I presume you reflected that new date? Or do I need an amendment?
It was implied.
It was implied, okay. Okay, that's what I thought I heard, but I just wanted to clarify that. So I will now deal with the balance of the report then, which would be items number one, two, five, and six. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Okay, we have one more item on heritage, Kitchener. Counsel Gazola? And you don't need to read the whole thing.
All right, it's, it's another heritage permit application. In this case, it relates to property of Street, 119 Joseph Street. Again, it's being recommended by the committee, and there are three conditions that need to be fulfilled, similar to those other conditions.
Okay, and seconded by Counsel Singh?
I'm sorry, I, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We have one item of unfinished business, and it's also a heritage permit application with respect to 1664 Huron Road and the, the heritage, the heritage farmhouse on that Who's bringing that forward?
Is it a tiebreaker or a review?
Yes. Okay, go on, can you click it? Go ahead.
Again, it's moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Singh, Heritage Permit Application, HPA, 2017, 023, 1664 Huron Road. It's being considered, and, and it was deferred and brought back to this, tonight's meeting, and, and that the recommendation is that in accordance with section 27.3 of the Ontario Heritage Act, the written notice of intention to demolish dated August 15th, to demolish the south addition, and to remove and relocate the original farmhouse located on the property municipally addressed at 1664 Huron Road, as outlined in Community Services Report, CSD 17074, be received for information, and that the notice bid runs its course, which means that we will carry on with the original recommendation that came here.
Okay, thank you.
There's, okay, there's a report from staff explaining the various.
Counsel Davey?
Just a couple questions on this one. We talked to the gentleman that appeared before us, that I recall was actually born in this home. But first of all, I'm not sure, yeah, so I guess it sounds like alternative number two in this, are, are the report that we received is the, is the one that we're looking at now?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. He indicated he wasn't necessarily in favor of it becoming a washroom. I'm wondering if he's been notified of this report and if his opinion has changed, because I do understand at one point he actually preferred it be demolished to incurring significant costs. So I'm wondering if, had anything, if staff's been in contact, anything like that.
Ms. McCallister?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, staff have not been in contact with Mr. Colbert at the meeting of September 25th. The item was deferred to tonight, so our thought was that that was sufficient notice. I will say that Callaway Seelock requested that staff look at an option, or did not include a washroom feature, and so staff went back and evaluated for, provided costs associated with that.
Okay, thank you. So, and I'm, I'm interested to hear Counsel Callaway Seelock's preference on this, if there is one, because it's a reward. I just, just a quick follow-up question then, too. In looking at the range of costs, I, like, I'm wondering if staff can help narrow it down at all, because, like, looking at, you know, the difference between alternative one and alternative two, on the low end's only $65,000, but on the high end is about $240,000. So I'm not really used to seeing, and it's difficult for me to compare ranges, if those are the two options in play, not saying that they are, but can staff give any indication? I know they referenced moving a structure before, but how comfortable are they with the ability to not be on the upper end of that contingency?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, there is a high degree of uncertainty associated with these costs, and we have been working with the consultant to try to narrow down the cost range. Unfortunately, at this stage, and council will recall that we had identified additional consulting work for the consultant as of September 25th. That work is still outstanding, and that is the work required to be able to provide more analysis to be able to narrow down the cost. So at this point, there is a high degree of uncertainty, and, which is why we incorporated an additional contingency.
So not that I want this issue to go on forever, but is there any reason why we couldn't wait until we had the information in narrowing that figure before we made the decision?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, we, so certainly staff can bring forward the additional analysis and refined costing to council, and we anticipate obtaining that information by the end of 2017, and could report back likely in early 2018. However, and I'm going to request that Leon speak to the heritage matter before council aid as it relates to decision-making and how that may impact on the next steps associated with the heritage home.
Okay. Mr. Bensonson?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So council has in front of it a recommendation that is coming from the September 5th Heritage Kitchener meeting with regard to the city's notice of intention to demolish the farmhouse at 1664 Huron Road. And in response to that notice of intention, council can take one of three measures. One is to designate the property as a means of preventing any demolition or relocation. So essentially, if council moves to designate, council is moving to keep the building in situ, in its current location. Council can request more information and essentially kind of defer the, the question with regard to whether it wants to designate or not designate. Or council can decide to let the, the 60-day notice period run its course and lapse, in which case then council would be in a position to obtain the necessary demolition permit to either demolish or relocate. So the initial intent with the recommendation before you was to proceed with the preferred conservation option, which was to relocate the farmhouse, in which case council does not need to designate the, the property and can let the notice period run its course. If that continues to be council's intent, whether it is alternative two, which is moving the farmhouse intact, or alternative one, which is to demolish the farmhouse and build a new structure, then you can, I would suggest you may want to continue to move forward with the, with the recommendation that is in front of you. However, if demolition is being contemplated possibly by council, you may want to revise the wording of the recommendation, because currently it makes specific reference to the relocation of the original farmhouse. So my suggestion would be a slight amendment to that, to leave council completely flexible as to whether it wants to relocate or demolish.
And, sorry, one last question then, before I queue out then, that's great to hear, but approving this then without explicit direction, it went back to us necessarily, would it?
Sorry.
Sorry. Unless there's additional direction, it wouldn't necessarily come back to us if we approved alternative, alternative number two, then we wouldn't, you would proceed on that basis, unless we asked you to come back with the narrowing of the figures to actually make that decision between demolishing or moving.
Mr. Bensonson?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna queue over now, thank you.
Counsel Fernandoz?
Just a, a bit of a understanding, because you've just given us three sort of other options, and, and timelines are probably different for each of these. Would that be correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If council decides to, to designate, that process can be initiated immediately, and a notice of intention to designate would come forward to council either at the next meeting or the meeting after that. With regard to any information, depending on what information is being requested of staff, we would endeavor to get that in front of us as soon as we possibly can. And with regard to taking no action, again, that would be a decision that council can make today with regard to taking no action. And to direct staff to provide that additional information with regard to getting a firmer number in terms of costing for relocation, which, as Ms. McCallister indicated, can come to council in early 2018.
Okay. And how does that relate, I mean, we've got the four breakdowns here with the costing, but each of them has additional timelines as well, right?
Ms. McCallister? You guys can just leave your mics on.
Okay, that sounds good. So through you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Fernandoz, can you clarify what you mean by timing?
Well, I mean, we just heard Mr. Bensonson give us sort of three options, but each of these alternatives, one, two, three, and four, have their own built-in times, right? I mean, if we're going to move intact, there's, if we're going to, you know, demolish and rebuild, each of the, I mean, I think the only one that would be pretty immediate would be if we chose alternative one, which would be to just demolish and, and move ahead with the new building.
Okay. So through, through you, Mayor. The timeline associated with these, each of the, any activity associated with the farmhouse would be planned for spring of 2018. There is the area grading tender that's been awarded, and grading works will, are, are about to commence. However, that will not be impacting the structure at this point, and then we would be looking to either demolish or move the building in the spring.
Okay, great, thank you.
Counsel Galloway Seelock?
Yes, I actually have an alternative motion that I would like to put forward. It really is just an amendment and an addition, but I'll give it to the clerk. I don't really have any questions, because I had the opportunity to meet with Denise and Leon before the meeting, and all of Scott's questions basically came out in that meeting, and I think it's, sorry, Counsel Davey, my, my apologies, are actually outlined in this motion. So I don't have any questions. If I could just explain it really quickly for you, it just takes out that part that Leon said about the demolition of the sixth addition and to remove and relocate the original farmhouse. So it only takes out that part of the original recommendation, and for staff to report back with more information on the in-depth study that is, that is to occur, and which will, which will allow us to have more concrete numbers. And on, I'm narrowing it down to option one and two. I didn't think, in my opinion, that three or four needed to be carried, carried forward at this time. And so that's where I'm going with this. And I think it's, from my understanding, is if we have no desire to keep the home in its current location, that we can move forward with this, and we're not committing ourselves to anything else tonight, but we will then have to make the decision too when the information comes back in December or January. So I'm happy to bring that forward and see where we can get with that financial piece, because when you look at the numbers, it can be $65,000 difference, or it can be up to $350,000 difference if you look at the low end of alternative one and the high end of alternative two. And we can get a lot more in that part for an additional $350,000. So anyways, that's, I, those are my comments. I told you I didn't have any questions, but that's where I'm coming from with this, so.
Okay, Ms. Fletcher? I will need a second for this.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to clarify with the demolition date, and Counsel Galloway Seelock's recommendation is correct. It says 2015.
Oh, sorry. It's just, where is the, sorry. I think it's earlier. I was making a conversation. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Davey. Counsel Gazola, back to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, that this is basically a staff recommendation that's coming forward. This, this went to Heritage Committee just for discussion, but they did not, they did not make a recommendation, right?
Mr. Bensonson?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, in fact, the, the committee did make a recommendation. The original recommendation, however, was based on the assumption that the alternative that was moved forward was the, only the relocation alternative.
Okay, all right, so that, that's fine. And then basically, what's before us is what you would be recommending, or what you did sort of recommend, right? That's what's before us.
Mr. Bensonson?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, yes.
Okay. So we'll deal with, so this is an alternate motion. So technically.
I think there's a few words that I missed.
Sorry? More likely a deferral? Okay, the clerk tells me it's more likely a deferral, I can live with that. Is that living?
It's not, no.
Yeah, no.
Referring to January, December, January.
You know, just to be clear, I'm gonna deal with Counsel Gazola's motion first, and come to you for your motion, just so that there's clarity on this, because it's, it's really more than an amendment, and it's really not a deferral, so let's just be clear on it. Okay? So the original motion that's in the report, if you're inclined to support this and vote against the original. against the original, if you want to support the original, then support that. So those in favor of the original? Those opposed? Okay, so now we'll deal with this one. Sure, okay. Recorded voters on?
This one is on screen.
On the screen, yes. Thank you. Going to try to zip through this so that we don't need to extend. Any unfinished, other unfinished business? Any new business? New business, Counselor Gazola?
I'll make a quick comment if I could, and I also have a question.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I was, I missed the new water rates discussion, and I have since reviewed it, and I want to commend staff. I think they've covered a lot of, given us a lot of different options. I want to just do a little "I told you so" because back in January, when I came to council, I presented two alternatives, and I went through on the weekend and worked through my alternatives, and they're very closely in line with what staff, the three options that staff have put forward.
Okay.
Nobody's here "I told you so." The other thing, it is a question, it is a question for you as a member of council, and it deals with the issue of overpass for the people in the ward that I represent. You know, what is happening there? The people are, there are two issues. Right now, it's a matter of just on the day-to-day till we make a decision. So what is there, what can we do to help that section of the city? And the bigger question is, you know, how do we move on the overpass question? I hear, I keep hearing rumblings of dollars, budget, and all that, but when we're dealing with a billion-dollar project, we need to deal with that issue.
Okay, why don't we ask Mr. Redman to give us a brief update as much as he can at this point?
Through the mayor. So this is a relatively calm project, so from the outset, we've always known that there is no land on the fairway side of the project, so that is the biggest stumbling block to move with the preferred alternative. So the preliminary preferred alternative is an at-grade crossing, not an overpass. Overpasses and underpasses were screened out in environmental assessment process due to the high-tension power line being buried under the corridor. So that is the phase we're at right now, is looking to see if we can get an easement or land acquisition on the Fairway roadside, which is a commercial side. There's also only one walkway on the residential side, which is located fairly far out of the way of the preferred crossing location. So that's at Belford Crescent, so we're looking at an option for a walkway or an easement closer to the preferred location, which tends to be closer towards sort of the Tim Hortons, McDonald's location on Fairway Road. So we are working with the region on that. The other complication is the LRT construction work that's underway, so this would be a change order request with the contractor. So we're working on options to see what that cost is versus the cost of waiting until the contractor's finished, hiring a separate contractor to install the signal system that would be required for an at-grade crossing. So I guess that's the best updated information I can give at this point in time. I know one of the triggers is the contractors installing the fence along the corridor, so that has been a bit of a point for residents in the community, but that is a requirement of the contract for trains to operate along that corridor.
Well, I understand. But what do we do for the people? What's the most important issue here? It's quite an inconvenience. There has to be, there has to be some answers there to help the people in the area. I keep hearing that it's part of the contract, while, you know, who gets to work on contract?
Well, I mean-
I'm looking to the members of the region to look after this.
Well, I mean, I guess what I would tell you, Counselor Gazola, is while certainly I advocated for that at committee last week, I think this is going to only move forward if it's done as a collaboration between the city and the region. I mean, I think it can be argued that the situation has been created by the region's LRT project, but sidewalks and pedestrian links are typically a municipal responsibility, and that's where all that is a need to get worked out. The challenge, quite frankly, here is that, you know, any of the linkages that existed before, as we know, were not legal linkages, and it's going to take time to work through these issues if we want to have a legal one, and there's not going to be an overnight solution. And I know that's right, but it's unfortunately, I think, a reality.
Let's pretend in the downtown for a few minutes.
Well, you know what? We dealt with a trail through the downtown, Counselor Gazola, and we end with a far-from ideal solution in Counselor Dinkins' ward. So those are, those are the realities of it, and, you know, unless you have a better suggestion, then please bring it forward, and staff are sure are willing to consider it, and, you know, we'll keep moving forward on this.
Do you really mean that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think any good idea should be considered, but we're going to need to find money, and that's going to mean finding money at the city and at the region, or ideally finding some money from our, you know, our federal and provincial partners around trail connectivity. Going to need a motion to go a few minutes past 11. We've got Counselor Fernandez, seconded by Counselor Ionitis. All those who are opposed, that's carried unanimously. Thank you. We are at first reading of the bylaws. It's been moved by Counselor Fernandez, seconded by Counselor Gazola. The lead be given the mover and seconded to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as read a third time in stand referred to committee in the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Galloway-Sealock. Oh, we have a late starter bylaw, okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have late starter purchasing bylaw for consideration.
Okay, that was included in that last batch. So Counselor Galloway-Sealock?
All right, do I have a mover for bylaws for second reading? Mayor Verbanovic. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Item number two.
Okay, we're dealing with number two with the Water River Regional Police Services Civic District Parking Agreement. Is there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Next, we have the application for cancellation refund reductions of taxes. Someone move that? Counselor Ionitis? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Number four is the 2018 council and standing committee schedule, moved by Counselor Yonetsky. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We have three items for information only.
Counselor Fernandez?
And I just have a question before we go there procedurally. These are for information. I know that with committees, we have consent. Is there any rules around discussing these? Like, do we need a vote, or is it just pull it out and deal with it?
There should be a vote. Through you, Chair, there should be a vote through, to pull them out, discuss them, if necessary.
And is that two-thirds?
No, it would be a majority.
Just majority, okay. Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions and a comment about the variance report, please.
Okay, so you're moving that it be discussed for, up for discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Okay, so just a question regarding the, on page five, two, the operations related to the garbage. I'm hoping, I'm assuming that what we're struggling with here is households who've decided to use our city garbage cans for their household waste, and so our staff, who usually pick up the garbage in the parks and stuff, are having a larger pickup?
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair, in pedestrian bins, leaf drop-off areas, and in our parks, we're finding increased household waste, and so our staff have been tracking that separately.
Okay. My other question is related to the gapping. I'm not quite understanding why we're seeing such a huge deficit due to staffing and benefit costs. Can we, can we have a bit of a clarification and understanding on that?
Mr. Goldrup?
We are seeing this year increased expenses for benefits, and that's causing pressure on our fringe, on our gapping.
So when you say benefits, you mean the number of benefits that are being sent in to our benefit provider?
I'm, like, our health care and our health benefits.
Our claims?
We're seeing increasing costs.
In our claims?
Yes.
Okay. Is this something that we should discuss offline, or is it something that we should be discussing here publicly?
I prefer to discuss offline.
Okay. And then I have really one comment, or sort of a question comment. With the hydro rates changing on July the 1st, how are we going to see the savings in electricity in this next six months going to be used as our starting point for our 2018 budget discussions?
Through you, Madam Chair. What I can advise is that the financial analyst and our facilities management division have very, very detailed projections of consumption and rates, and so what I can assure you, not having seen the details myself, is that the projection is based on very detailed analysis, as is the 2018 budget. So I'd suggest through the budget process, we can go back and have that conversation, but for now, this would reflect a very good projection of what our actual costs will be based on rates for the balance of the year.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last sentence.
What I can assure you is that what you would see here is a very precise projection of what our balance will be at the end of the year based on projected rates and consumption.
So we'll be using the savings as our starting point for our tax increases? That, I mean, the two should be tied a little bit together?
Right. What I can assure you is that the 2018 budget will be based on our best projection of rates and consumption. And so while we are seeing some savings in some facilities, what I can also advise is that as we add splash pads in other facilities that consume water, produce sewage, and use electricity, that there is growth in consumption, and so, yes, efficiencies and rates can offset that to an extent, but we are seeing costs go up in other areas as well.
I think, though, to specifically maybe answer the question is that it's going to be used to offset any other deficits we have throughout the course.
No, not necessarily. I really just want to make sure that the savings that we see in hydro due to the rate drop, that that will become sort of our starting point. But I think you've answered it, that's fine. I think I understand what you're saying.
I was just suggesting that any savings that we have from this year will go to the bottom line of what our deficit or our surplus would be at the end of this year. So there's a lot of pluses and minuses within our variance report, and it would just go to offset some of the deficits.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
I see there's a couple other people in the queue. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. Just one question. I saw throughout the report, there's a couple references to costs related to flooding. Is there any expectation that we'll have any recoveries through our insurance?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, my recollection is not through our insurance policy. The deductible is too high, and so likely will be below it. There may be some recoveries from the insurance reserve, but that's really internal accounting, and so that would be us paying ourselves. It wouldn't be a recovery through an insurance policy. Okay, thank you.
And-
Counselor Gazola?
Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I have a number of questions, which I will not put, just one or two that I would like to put forward. I would like to see some kind of an answer, and it doesn't necessarily have to be denied, but I'm really concerned when I look at the end of August, for example, we're sitting on our total expenditures, we're sitting with a $943,000 surplus, but by the end of the year, you're saying that that's all going to be gone, and it's a $35,000 deficit. So that's quite a, quite a variance from where we are now and to where we're going. So if these are all timing differences, that may be one thing, but I just, doesn't mean we're going to go on a spending spree between now and the end of the year? I don't know. And the other question I would like to ask for, I would like to ask for a detailed or an explanation of that whole gapping, the way it works. We're showing an anticipated $750,000 deficit at the end of the year. Could we not, could we get a report that shows a little more detail as to what's involved in that account and how you come up with that kind of a deficit? Unless everybody understands it, I don't. And that's quite a, that's quite a variance. So I'd like to, if perhaps that needs to be left as a paper when we deal with the budget, but it is an area that I would like to see a little more explanation for all of council to help them understand it.
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, we have headlines that are written internally. We have to open it, so I think fairly easily we can turn an email around to council, and then if that's through the budget process, we can have more discussion.
Okay, thank you. That is all the questions that we have. Were there any late starters, Madam Clerk? Okay, then I will, do I move the rising report?
Yep.
Someone move the rising report? Counselor Marsh, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And I'm moving, and seconded by Counselor Davy, that proceedings and recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the hall held this date and attached heretofore informing part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Fernandez, seconded by Counselor Gazola, that bylaws listed on the agenda, including the additional ones. For third reading, be taken as read a third time. We finally pass the number seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Schneider, that be now adjourned. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much, everybody.